Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, do we have everybody here? We do. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call. Trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Trustee Lightke.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Does any board member have a disclosure regarding any relevant information or contact pertaining to any of the items on the agenda?
Lampier, I do not.
Stutzer does not.
Lightke, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
I had a brief phone call with the applicant for 75 Monroe, Chris DiMarzo. Today, he just wanted to let me know that he had, you know, brought in the checks for the escrows. And it was a brief conversation and that was kind of it. So that's, that's the only thing I have to disclose. Does any board member have a conflict of interest regarding any of the items on the agenda that is having a financial interest in the outcome of a vote on the item before you?
Lampier, I do not.
Stutzer, I do not.
Lightke, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
So for the record, if a conflict of interest were to be identified, the board member then must recuse themselves from participating in any discussion or voting on the agenda item. So with that being said, I'm asking the clerk to read the open meeting.
Wait, hold on. Do you have a, you didn't state whether you had a conflict?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I don't.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. That being said, the clerk reads the open meeting compliance certification, please.
Sure. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise your hand feature. Just so that everyone knows that if you raise your hand to comment, I will see that. But also, I only look at questions for the board through the Q and A. So if you post anything in chat, I will not see it. Okay. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York State laws. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt the speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to Village Clerk at villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, the written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with the optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. We should have that on tape.
Yeah, and I guess I only spoke to two other people.
Well, it's good to hear. Okay. So with that being said, let's start with our department reports. Let's start with building inspector, please. Any questions for Steve? Hi, Steve. Dan?
Yeah, the only question I had for you was, tell me about the conversation around the barns with the Powers family. You mentioned in there you had talked to them about that.
Yeah, I met with Mrs. Powers and she said they're in the process of trying to sell the barns. She didn't say to who, but she said there's a little issue with the attorney they were using had a medical, something happened so that he went in the hospital. But they, they cannot afford, she told me, they cannot afford to do anything with them, so they are looking to sell them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Justin?
Yeah, thank you for the information, Steve. I just wondered if there was any follow-up on the fire district's vacant house next to Village Hall?
I have heard nothing from them in a while, Justin.
I can speak to that. We have, we're trying to connect the fire commissioner with the Landmark Society for, you know, some input from them in terms of it being an historical property and maybe how to move forward to sort of stabilize it. But that's as far as it is. I mean, the calls have gone out, so that's at least the status there.
The other question I had for you, Steve, was around the, weren't you working on the the shortlist of code updates?
Yeah. I put out a thing next week and have a second meeting, maybe the end of next week, maybe like Thursday. I'm in, I'm in class Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week, so schedule's a little, little bad for next week, but I will reach out and see if maybe we can get together on Thursday again and and go from there.
How if the preliminary talks gone?
Good. I mean, we're, everybody's just kind of figuring out where, you know, where they belong in the, in the process.
Okay.
But we've, we've kind of got a list down. We got a priority list that we're going to put together. And it's going to take a while. It's not anything as sure, especially with the budget cycle going on. It's basically, you know, working at a, pecking at a little bit now till the budget cycle goes through. And then I think we can take a bigger bite out of it.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding, you were saying that most of the feedback really is, a lot of the tweaks and the updates are sort of more with planning and zoning.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. It is, it is more what, what changes were done in the plan, in the zoning codes that created some of the issues. And like I said, a lot of the ones that I initially came are just purely clerical changes that didn't get adjusted in the code to reference to points that don't exist anymore.
Right, so there's a consistency issue.
It's just repointing them at the proper place.
Okay, no, good catch. That's great. Great, any other questions for Steve? Who's been very busy? Okay, well, thanks, Steve. All righty. Next up, our DPW report. Hi, Zach.
Hello, good evening.
Any questions for Zach? Who's also been busy, yeah?
Yeah, the only one I had was around the sewer truck is still out for repairs. How long has that been out?
Since November.
Wow.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do to expedite that, huh? But it's, it's great that town had one that you could use, but still.
Yeah, no, they're, they're waiting on parts, everything behind schedule right now. So we have systems in place to back this up when we do have issues, so we're not stranded.
That does. Renee, yes. That reminded me the, the piece about the, the clog. Was that on our side? Is that why where the rags and the towels or whatever was, was in it? It was on the village side?
This was at the Del Monte?
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't had an issue at the Del Monte in a while. We've been proactive about cleaning that, that section of the system through there because it is notorious for grease buildup and, and also debris, rags, and stuff like that. But the Del Monte staff seem to be working hard to minimize it, so I don't know, this is just, it's been a while since we've had one of these, but it's not.
Okay, thanks.
It really only affects them, which is kind of good, you know, not, you know, that a sore backup is good anytime, but they, they know the reasoning behind it and it doesn't need to affect.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions or comments for DPW?
Thanks for all the salting and the plowing. I know it was, it was a lot this last, last month.
You're, you're welcome. Hopefully, it'll last a little bit.
Yeah, tonight looks like one too, huh?
Yeah.
Or tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I'm hoping we'll get the light end of it, though.
We may, you know, they're still trying to figure that out. We'll see. Well, thank you.
While we have Zach, to the rest of the trustees, we had another in, in the series of safety meetings. And if you guys want an update on all that, or do you, we could write that up, we could talk about it. There are things that are happening and there's been good communication and good execution. Better than good communication is good execution and, and those things have been moving forward. Some of that you'll see in the budget discussions, but some of it is being implemented as we talk right away.
Yeah, why don't we get a little further along and then maybe we can give a little, a report, you know?
Sure.
One of our upcoming meetings.
All right, that's fine. I'll just do a bunch of calls.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually Dan put together the checklist document, which was really great. You know, for crew members before they take out a vehicle, there's a little checklist that they're going to go through. That's, you know, that'll be on their phone that they can access. You did it in what, Google Docs?
Yeah, it's a Google form, so they can just click through and, and
Yeah.
check down the list and then we'll have a record of it, too.
Yeah, and it's a great way to, you know, track what's going on, so thanks for that.
Well, Doug was really instrumental in that as well, so shout out to Doug.
Thanks to Doug, too. Yep, great. All righty. Moving on, Jeff said he did not have a report this evening. So we'll move along to the treasurer's report and the clerk's report.
And you're up.
Oh, there's Brooklyn.
Hi, Brooklyn.
Hello, everyone. I thought I was going to give the introduction like everyone else does, but it's all right. So we have our typical bill pay. Were there any questions about the bill pay?
Yeah, the only one I had was 527 Bernard Donigan. It was the 3,500 sidewalk rear entrance energy projects. Is that at Village Hall?
Yes, it is. We, and that one was left blank. I wanted to confirm the code with Dorothea, so we made sure we got that coding correct. So that's why you only see the A next to it. But that is for the side entrance, correct?
Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I, I had some questions earlier on about the same invoice and I appreciate Brooklyn pulling the detailed invoice out for me to take a look at at Village Hall. That is the, I don't know if everybody recalls, the gentleman who came in to give the report on a ban for the village, so taking on more debt service. And I was a little bit surprised as well to see that expense of over $3,500. I looked at the detailed invoice and I, I understand that we did approve a contract to work with Donigan on January 27th at our meeting. And the information is in the packet there. My understanding of what we were approving at that time was just kind of a master service agreement that would be, I actually went back to listen to the meeting and we said that we approved the, we authorized Donigan in the meeting, quote, "to retain your services." And then he said, "if and when you need us." So I wasn't entirely clear that we had decided as a board that we needed those debt services. And in fact, I would want to very carefully look at it before we do take on extra debt. So that was a surprise to me. Now, understanding that we did approve that contract, that was on January 27th. And when I looked at the detailed breakdown of hourly work, all of those were either prior to or on January 27th. So my question, Dorothea, perhaps you could clarify this or somebody else could help out. What is the, what did we approve and what work was done? And are we trying to approve something that is retroactive for work that occurred previously? I'd be happy to share my screen, too, if anybody wants to see that invoice.
Actually, Bernie Donigan had an existing contract with us. We were just renewing the contract. He was working under that contract and we usually have a payment to their firm for their financial advisement because we do have an outstanding bond. And as we do look at other things, yes, they do prep and do the work for us. So I'm not surprised that we have a bill related to that.
So, so the work that was done is, is related to a previous contract we already had with them?
Yeah, we have, we had a contract prior to that. We're just renewing it and updating it. That was that process.
Well, it says on the, and I've got this in front of me here. Let's see, it says that the work completed was related to, I'll read directly from the invoice. Professional services rendered per contract letter dated January 22nd, Part IV Financial Management Services, i.e. January 2022. That must have been the January 27th meeting when we approved it. So those costs were not related to a prior contract, but it was related to what we approved at the meeting. So I guess I'm just confused about what we approved and what was done and whether that was covered.
Should we seek additional information then from Donigan to clarify that?
We can get that clarified with Donigan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the bills? Lily, yeah?
I had some questions about clarifications on some of the charges on, on Jeff's bill. And I, I do believe, however, that when Jeff arrives, and I assume we'll expect him about seven, that we would have to enter into attorney-client in order for him to answer any inquiries I might have about clarification of some of the charges. Is that correct? That that would not be consistent with attorney's bill? Or would that be done in public?
I don't know why we would go into session on a bill.
Is it related?
Is it related to litigation?
That would be my question. If it's related to a litigation matter or something like that.
No, it's just, you know, as, as he, as he writes in each of the blocks, what, what he is charging the village for. I, there were a couple of charges that he made and I have questions regarding a little bit more clarification. Some of them were a little bit cryptic and I was wondering if there was a reason why that information wasn't shared with the trustees, but there were, we can handle it in public if that's appropriate. I'm happy to do it in a attorney-client session.
Call them, too. I mean, you could have called them about the bill as well.
And it's not up for approval, so you have, we can, you know.
All right, I'm sorry, that, that's my mistake because I saw it in our packet, so I assumed that it was up for approval.
No, there's no, there's no Aspirin bills in the bill pay this time. So you can reach out and, you know, if you want to point out what it is and we can reach out to Jeff and have him answer that question, you can give him a call, whatever you want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, those were in our email, but not in the packet.
Right. They were by separate email. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the exception of, and I'm sorry, I don't have the line item for the
527.
It's 527, with the exception of that particular invoice, which requires further review.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lightke.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Motion passes.
How about me?
Oh, Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
We got enough.
Yeah, I hit it off, I was done.
Yeah, you went over the limit. Anything else, Brooklyn, for, that you want to talk about?
I think that's it. I'm pretty sure I'll be needed again once, at some point throughout the night.
Probably, okay.
So is, is the next thing on the agenda, Brooklyn or Dorothea? It's about paychecks?
It's me.
Yeah.
Brooklyn will chime in when needed.
Yeah.
We reached out to paychecks to look at how we're handling our time sheets, our punch-in, our punch-outs. We have a very old time clock down at DPW, which sometimes can be tricky and different things. So what we're looking is to automate that system and to go to where employees can punch in and out on their phone when they're working in the field, that they change what department they're working for. They can just do the alley-oop and go into the next department. So we're getting a better account, counting of their time. Which all that work, when it comes in, Zach will be able to print their time sheet. They'll be able to sign off on their time sheet, just like normal. Those time sheets will come up to me. The great part of this is all that data will be entered already for me. So I'll just be verifying from the time sheets to the payroll system that it's there. Then I'm able to get the payroll done. And then from there, Brooklyn will get reports where he doesn't have to take the time sheets and try to figure out the guy's writings and what departments they're in and how much time. It'll break it all out, tell them which amount we need to charge to which department and get the payroll done. So it's a time saver along the way. The change in the cost of the program is about $18 a month. So it's not a huge expense, but it's a cost-saving expense. When you're looking at my time, you're looking at Brooklyn's, you're looking at the guy's time, you're looking at Zach's. It's just a better tool for us to use and to automate that system. So we're gung-ho to start as soon as possible. If, you know, obviously, we'll be looking for some kind of start time in April. But I just wanted to bring it to the board and get your approval to move forward with changing the way we do this.
I think it's a great idea.
Any questions?
Yes, Justin?
Yeah, have we reviewed any other kind of time sheet software, time control software? And do we have, who would be entering this information at the DPW? Is there going to be a publicly available computer terminal or what's the, what's the plan to get everybody to enter their times?
Well, we already have the paychecks for our program, so we're already paying paychecks. That's why it's not worth looking at another software package. Matter of fact, I think the town of Pittsburgh uses the Paychex program.
They use this app, they use this.
Yeah. We have shopped around payroll companies before and we've come back to paychecks a couple of times. We were with ADP, we've done that and checked the pricing in that before. So I'm very comfortable moving forward with this program since we won't have to go through the install. And as I communicated, I thought maybe you understood, the employees will be entering through here. We will have a computer available at the village, at, at the village, at the DPW in case someone forgets a phone, so that they can enter from there as well. So, you know, we're going to have a few glitches when we start up. There is no way around it, but we'll work through it. Yes.
Yes, Dan?
To Justin's point about shopping around the time sheets element of this, it is a good question. I've done a lot of work in that area and you're, and there will be other ones that integrate well with paychecks that, you know, that's going to be fine. But you're not going to find one that's going to integrate well and be easy to use and is 18 bucks a month. It's just that little, you know, so it's worth a shot with the cheap, already-integrated solution. If it doesn't work, then sure, we could shop around. There's hundreds or thousands of companies that do online time sheets. But I, I would definitely think, you know, because it's such a small marginal cost, it's definitely worth it.
Yeah, thanks for that. Okay. Yep. What else?
Just checking if the word's good, if I can have approval to move forward and get this implemented?
Is there a motion to approve?
Approved. Lampier?
I'll send it.
Nope, that's good, I was just asking, so, good.
Okay, trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Trustee Lightke.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer. Oh, motion passes. I have two other things. One, I didn't forward to you, I had a request from a resident. Due to many circumstances, their bill, they didn't end up getting it. It, something went haywire, it got stuck in a magazine. This is an ongoing problem with our village bills, as everybody knows, they're a little postcard form and they have a tendency to get stuck or lost or whatever. And there was a mishandling by the post office as well. So they requested that the penalty be waived. We have, you know, obviously, there is postal situations going on right now, so I am requesting that the village board waive the penalty for Mr. Hanson if so choose.
I'll make that motion and the, the name wasn't important. The name doesn't matter, just, yeah.
I just want to indicate which account, so.
Sure.
I'll second. Okay, roll call.
Okay, trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Lightke.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. And I just want to update the board with my workings, talking to our village accounting firm as to where we stand. January and February's closing will take a bit longer than I anticipated. It is not the best practice to close out these months with someone else's numbers, but it's where I'm at. So the best way forward for me in Brooklyn is to take a deep dive, go through things to recreate the numbers for these months to implement them in. And then the accounting firm will audit from there. Okay? They'll work with us to create a clean slate for the new treasurer. Going forward, things should start smooth as we transition. We're going from mostly manual systems from spreadsheets into the computer program to going to automated. So we're using our financial and accounting software already that can do that. So I have been lucky and found today some of the things that can pull from the existing cash receipts programs in that were in the past done manually. Now I can pull it in and I, I'm, right now, I'm just making sure the numbers match to the deposits. And so it is a little time-consuming work to make sure the data is correct. So we'll be automating the payroll. We're hoping to enable online payments such as sewer fees, parking tickets, and our building permits. Now, we have that capability through our current web, website software at no charge. So that'll be something up during, during the board for your approval as well as we move forward because that will assist in getting those monies to the village faster as well as getting it into the system. Okay? We also, we already talked about the app. We're dramatically streamlining, we are streamlining the accounting operation as extraction of database, which will be created for Brooklyn and me to access to generate payroll and reports. So it's going to take us a few months, so I'll keep you posted as we go along. It might go smoother, it might go faster. It's just I have to dig in and go through manual work as well as try to bring in the computer to get everything satisfied. Okay? Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, so they're gonna, they're gonna do like a data extract periodically and then you run reports on it in what? In there?
No, I'm going to pull from our systems, pull what we have, look at the manual receipts, take everything to the, as well as our deposit slips, to our bank statements. They'll take all that. Once I get the data into the revenues and any other charges that didn't show up or transactions, because right now, everything has to be entered. All the cash receipts, all the payroll information, everything. So revenues, expenditures, it all has to be modified in. Once it's all in, then they're going to audit from all that paperwork and make sure nothing's missing. So that's when they'll double-check the work we did and come back and say, yes or no, something's missing. Oh, you missed this. So we'll go through.
And then going forward, everything will already be in the system.
As we go forward, we'll be
Okay.
further along with automation. I would say 95% of what we will do will already be started through our programs we have. So the entries will be there and they'll just hit immediately as they come in.
Okay, Steve, your hand up?
Just real, real quick as a follow-up on that. I, I recognize how hard this is and, and that you guys, this first one that you go through is going to be really hard. And so I'm, I'm, I'm super patient. I'm not speaking on behalf of all of the trustees, but I'm definitely patient on the January and February closings, knowing that you have to, you have to go through it the first time. March and April and, you know, those will be quicker. But we definitely expect that and we are here to help. So even if it's, you know, journal entries or whatever, whatever you need, we're here to help.
Well, I appreciate it and we'll get it in. It's just because I'm recreating everything or I'm not understanding everything that was done at the end because so much was done manually. That's what the trick is here, is finding what was done and recreating it and getting it in and then automating it. So it'll get done. Our accountant is, you know, there to help me and offer suggestions. I can reach out to you guys, so we'll be okay. It's just going to take a little bit.
Yeah, this is part of the transition.
Yeah, and Brooklyn, he's been great when I say, Brooklyn, I need this. You know, so I'm driving him crazy, but no, he's been an awesome go-to person to help me out with this, too, as well, as we go through. We're doing it together.
The tag team, yes, indeed. Yes, Steve, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm just curious, because we're, we're talking about automation here and making things better. I constantly get asked by applicants to use credit, credit cards. Is there any way in this automation changes and stuff that we could transition to taking credit cards for, you know, transactions within the village?
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the website stuff. We'll be able to take the payments through the website. You'll be able to take that credit card or whatever through there.
They'll do something like a PayPal type of, yeah.
And the one thing, when the village takes credit cards, we don't pay the fees. Those fees are passed on to the consumer. So if someone's charging their building permit, they're going to get the fees. So if someone's charging their building permit, they're going to get the fees that would be a charge normally to the merchant. So.
Two or three percent, something like.
We won't be paying that. We'll be getting the amount. So if the building permit is thirty dollars, we're going to get thirty dollars. They might be charged thirty to forty, but we'll get our thirty dollars. So it'll be clean. We won't have any loss of revenue for using us a service.
Right, and just, it'll make things a lot cleaner for payments.
Sure, it'll make it faster. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions for me on that? Okay.
Anything else to update us?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay, so yeah, okay, minutes.
While this is like a Dorothea section, do we want to talk about scheduling the budget meeting?
Yes.
Oh, thanks, Dan. Yeah, sure.
Yes, what has happened, and I do apologize to the board, HBB has a meeting at five thirty on Monday. I really do need to take part. Kristen's been awesome. She's coming up to speed. But this is a tricky meeting and I really feel I need to be there, so. I can't have myself. So we, we're starting the budget meeting at five. I can't foresee us being done in a half hour or fifteen minutes. For me to move on. So my suggestion was to move it to Tuesday, but I understand, Dan, you have a conflict, so.
So we looked at four o'clock, I think on either day with a, with a hard stop. I sent out that email to everybody.
Either works for me, Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, should we do Monday at four then? Just keep it still on Monday, but just have it one hour earlier just to get things moving?
I, sorry, I might be, let's see, I, I should be able to get back by about four o'clock. It might be a couple of minutes.
Would it be better for Tuesday then?
I think I'm okay either way as well.
Okay, alrighty.
Okay, so we'll continue with Monday at four o'clock in a hard stop.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, minutes.
Yes, I'm going to apologize. Apparently I can't write minutes at nine o'clock at night. That's all I can tell you. Apparently I was staring at my screen too long last night because I must have corrected and uncorrected and. I did bad things. So I appreciate all the corrections, the effort from the board to get them right. So I will make all those corrections and so. We can move forward with approvals. That would be awesome.
Okay, what's first up? Which one?
January twenty seventh.
Were there any additions other than what we all sent you via email?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty seventh meeting, meeting minutes as amended.
Second. Okay, roll call. Trustee Manfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Next up?
February first. I screwed these up. I don't know how.
No, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve February first minutes as written.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Manfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Okay, February third.
Okay. Any, any additional input? We're good?
And those have amended amendments, yeah, or corrections. I'll make a, a motion. To approve the February third minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Manfair.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, and February ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Manfair, you weren't present at this meeting, so I'm going to assume you're going to abstain. Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you so much and I appreciate everybody's patience with that. Apparently I make more mistakes on one page minutes than I do five pages.
That's why you have everyone help out. It's a lot of writing.
It is a lot of writing. You know, actually I think we're waiting for Jeff. Jeff's going to be joining us, I think in a few minutes. But maybe what we could do is move on to our non municipal use permits because they're pretty straightforward.
Correct. We do have, I'm gonna, if everybody's good, I'm not sure where, oh, I scheduled them first so this works out. Ms. Fleming is here representing Corn Hill Navigation, so I'm gonna allow her to talk. Ready?
Great.
She should be coming in here.
You all ready?
Ms. Fleming, you're good to go.
Hello. Okay, I'm unmuted. Welcome. Hi, thank you. What can I, I don't know the procedure, so I'm kind of hoping to follow your lead.
Okay, Ms. Fleming, I believe this is your first year doing the Corn Hill Navigation for the sand patch?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. So where they told me, I filled out the application, I brought it into Steve. We've got the proper supporting documents with it in the form of certificate of liability insurance. And also supplied a flyer that says we're going to be opening mid-May. We don't have a date yet because the Canal Corporation hasn't given us one. We are aiming to open, to sail the sand patch from its winter moorings in Massedon. Into the town of Pittsburgh on the twelfth or thirteenth of May. Our first charters are scheduled for the sixteenth.
Okay. Well, this.
I'm just going to share the screen for what you brought in today.
Oh, okay.
The mooring in this, sorry Lily, is the mooring in the same place as it has been? There was talk of moving it. It's in the same place though?
It is in the same place.
Okay, great.
As far as we know.
Okay, and I would like to make a motion that we approve the non municipal use permit for, can. Do you use Sam, you don't say Sam Patch, you.
Say the Corn Hill Navigation.
Corn Hill Navigation.
Yeah.
For the twenty twenty-two season.
I'll second.
And are we forty-five days out?
Yes, it's May, May twelfth. We're, okay, we're good. I'm sorry to say it's not me yet. Okay, trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Manfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion approved. You're all set to go, Ms. Fleming.
Thank you so much.
And, Donna, is there anything else we can do for you besides this? Help promote your business?
I think that the director and the assistant director are meeting with the town in the next week or so. And they'll be discussing, they have a few things on the agenda. So for tonight, I just needed to get our permit in place so that we know we can get started.
Actually, they're meeting with me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just do licenses and certification.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Thanks.
Okay, next up, Friends of the Pittsburgh Community Library. Nope, you're muted.
Typically, no one's here for the library. Usually present their application. I'll give them a second if they're here. Raise your hand. Yep, it looks like me. This is their annual book sales. They have split it up into, I think they got four, two different dates that they're doing this time. I know last year they mended it with the pandemic. They did multiple little book sales and I think they're sticking to that kind of platform. So they're looking for their approval to move forward. And no, we will need a forty-five day waiver on this one.
Yeah. Okay, any questions or I'll entertain a motion to approve with a forty-five day waiver?
Second, Manfair.
Okay, trustee Manfair.
Manfair, I.
Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Okay.
Next up, we have the Pittsburgh crew.
Correct. Typically, they let me do their presentation too, but I'll make sure no one is here. If you're here for the Pittsburgh crew, please raise your hand. I'm going to say that's a no. This is their annual regatta in May. As they have had in past years, it looks like it's going to be Saturday, May twenty-eighth and May twenty-ninth. I know that they use the DPW shop as a medical facility. Is that right, Zach?
Yeah, this is where everybody sets up. Medical, all the crew teams come through here. It's pretty busy that.
Yeah, it's big.
And we won't need a forty-five day waiver on this one. So the board is good.
I'll make a motion to approve the Pittsburgh Crew's Regatta on May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
I can.
Roll call.
Trustee Manfair.
Manfair, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, great.
One more.
I know, we're. Yes, Lily.
Thank you, clarification on that. Is, that is Memorial Weekend, is that correct? To win, and I'm sorry that I don't remember this, is the town doing a simultaneous event?
Paddle and port.
That weekend?
That I do not know. I have not received, usually they send out a letter to us letting us know their events for the year, but they have not sent me any notification.
They're doing it, but I'm not sure because we haven't received a letter yet. Yeah.
Okay, I, I ask this because it being a holiday weekend, that would mean that our DPW, or at least part of the crew would need to be available, I believe, at some. Point during that weekend because of the, of the trash and, and just safety issues. Do you remember, Zach, did we have somebody usually on that weekend?
The town handles, for their event, the town handles all the trash pickup. Pittsburgh Crew takes care of the trash around the DPW and some of the facilities around Lock Thirty-two and Jumping Tatt, where everybody sets up for the announcements. And we are typically already into our watering, flower watering at that point. So we will have somebody in on each one of those days, early morning, watering flowers and also looking at trash.
Yeah, there's always another set of eyes from our DPW when they come in. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's always covered one way or another. I know there was an issue in the past, but I think we're past that.
And the, the town did announce May twenty-eighth, yes, paddle and port.
Oh, they did. Oh, thanks, thanks.
Noon to ten.
All right.
Great, awesome. So the next one I have for the board, I set this out separately. I'm not sure why this PDF wouldn't let me merge, wouldn't let me print, wouldn't let me do anything with it to get it into your packet. That's why I sent it to the board separately. It's for the Pittsburgh Little League Parade and that is proposed for May seventh. It's usually, I believe it's somewhere in high school, high school to Ford Field. They sent all their insurance docs and everything else that they normally get with us, so I think they're good to go. Is there any questions or concerns? Like I said, I do apologize. It wasn't in the packet. I didn't want to hold them up by the time I got a new PDF from them, but.
Yeah, it's the parade that they do every year.
Correct. Nothing's really changed.
Yeah.
Was there, was there time for that?
Usually the morning for.
Let me see here. Ten AM, Zach.
Thank you.
There a motion to approve the application for us?
I, I would make a motion to approve the application for non municipal use for the Little League Parade on May seventh at ten AM.
Second. I believe Renee, you seconded.
That was me. I was a little fast with my mute, not mute.
Okay, trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Manfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's see, has Jeff joined us yet?
No, he has not.
Okay, so you know what? Maybe what we could do is the COVID update.
As we know, things with the COVID pandemic, there's been a lot of relaxing of rules and things like that. And I'm asking for the hall to have that kind, same kind of relaxation. And not request that people wear masks in. We do have our barriers up and, you know, we can always choose to wear a mask. But I think we're getting to a point with the pandemic that everybody is relaxing things. So I'm reaching out to the board as well as looking at how we want to continue with the village board meetings. I have not heard, obviously next week we'll get that determination from the state whether they're going to continue to allow the virtual. So I'm putting this all into your lap and seeing how you feel.
Yep, Justin?
Yes, thank you, Dorothea. I, I support those suggestions and I would also suggest that we add the DPW to the relaxation of asking requirements from our previous policy.
Okay. Lily, did you have your hand up or were you just moving?
No, I was just moving.
Okay. Yeah, any other thoughts? I mean, I think, I think, you know, the, the language I think has sort of been changed from pandemic to endemic. You know, that we are sort of a little bit on the other side of this, so I'm in agreement with Justin.
Let's talk about our next meeting then. We, we talked first about the budget meeting that we're anticipating on Monday. How do we want to handle that one? And then the next trustee meeting would be, help me out here, the fourteenth of March, no. Twenty-fourth. So how would the board like to proceed with those two meetings?
If I can request just as convenience for myself, I know I'm anxious to get you all in a room. But given I have a virtual meeting with the HBB board, it might be easier giving the hard stop we have with that meeting for everybody to do that one virtual. And then continue from that point with the.
Oh, just the one on Monday.
Just for Monday.
Yeah. That makes sense. That's a, that's a practical matter, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And then what about public meetings? The next one is, we said was the twenty-fourth. Yeah. Any thoughts?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, again, begin meeting at Village Hall, beginning at our next regularly scheduled trustee meeting on Thursday, March twenty-fourth.
I'm, I'm for that. Are, are we going to do them as hybrid or just record them?
No, I think we can still do the hybrid. We had some success with that before we went back to virtual. I don't see a reason to change. I still have the equipment. I mean, it's a little clunky for me to get it set up, but you know, it does bring in the public to the meetings. I have no problem with that. Obviously, that's a board decision, but I'm good to set up for hybrids.
I, I like the hybrid. I think it allows for additional access for people. Maybe some people still wouldn't be comfortable coming in. Yet in person, so it gives people options certainly going forward. Yes, Justin?
Yeah, just a date question. So Dorothy, you were saying that, let's see, next Monday, which would be the fourteenth, you wanted to continue virtual there. But then we've also got another meeting before the next regularly scheduled board meeting, don't we? So it'd be the budget meeting on the twenty-first of March. Should that be in person?
Yeah, that could be in person. That one could be in person. I totally, I'm thinking, I'm in a regular meeting, I'm thinking regular. I'm over focused on general meetings. So yes, no, you're absolutely right. We have a twenty-first set for a budget meeting as well.
Yeah, why wouldn't we do that in person? I just think, you know, for this Monday, it's more logistical.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'm out of town for the twenty-first. I mean, I can, I can be hybrid. But I am back up for the twenty-fourth. I'd prefer, nobody else has been showing up to these and they are online. I would prefer that Monday, the twenty-first is virtual as well. Especially because we're sharing screens and that kind of thing.
But if. Either way, you guys, I mean, either way.
I'm open to that.
Yeah.
First in-person meeting would be Thursday.
The twenty-fourth.
Starting with our regular meeting. Okay.
Yes, the only conestive to that is the extension of the allowance to have virtual meetings.
That's right.
Yeah, I won't know that until around the fifteenth, sixteen, so we'll have time to let everybody know.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll work it from there.
Okay.
So as long as we have a quorum, Dan can, could still participate in that if we, if we're not allowed to hold them virtually, he just wouldn't.
Yeah, we can advertise. Yeah, we can advertise, again, we go to, you're allowed to zoom in or whatever now, but you have to, you know, we have to comply with the open meetings law, no different than before. The other part of this, and I'm making a plea and let everybody know, we have an abundance of COVID testing kits. Monroe County stopped by yesterday, and I now probably have about eight hundred testing kits available. I'm seeing a shocked face. That was me when they rolled the card in. I could have used them two, three months ago. So, what I would say is let the public know to come on in, get some test kits. They are, I did check some of the boxes. They are good through July, you know, or a few, or May. But we do have them available, so if you want to come in, get them, I think the mayor had some suggestions as distribution points for them.
Yeah, we were talking about, you know, there's so many, you know, if the food cupboard needs them. I also do work with an outreach program, you know, maybe some shelters need them as well, if, you know, if our residents don't, can't use them. Just because there is a time, timeframe there, so.
Can you do a Facebook post?
Yeah, we'll be doing one, and I encourage you all to do your own post and tell your friends, their friends, their neighbors.
Anybody coming into Village Hall will be able to get a free test kit.
Please, please, please do. I hate to see them go to waste, and I rather they get into everybody's hands. I mean, yeah, I was shocked to see these roll in yesterday.
Great. Well, thanks, Dorothea. Anything else on the COVID or?
No, I think we're good. We'll be back to just masking if we choose to mask, and that'll be great. Thank you so much.
Alrighty. Okay, hi Jeff, how you doing? Okay, so next up is the Mangle Mesker and Bar proposal. There, we just call them MMB. That's the acronym there.
This is where the village is the county firm. I, as I discussed with the board at our budget meeting, this is the proposal. Mike said if you had additional questions that you've found with this that you feel you need to talk to me, you'd be more than happy to come to our next meeting. But at this point, he wants to also give me some time to try to get some numbers in, so he can come in and, you know, review them and everything else. But this is the proposal.
Yeah, I think, given the transition, this is, this is really money well spent and the right way to do it. And it's our existing firm, and at thirty-four hundred dollars is really quite reasonable for all of the services that they outlined in there. Plus peace of mind, and it will help to serve as training for both Brooklyn and Dorothy. I think it's money well spent. I think you could even kind of allocate, if we wanted to get fancy, we could allocate some of the money from training or leave it all for auditing, whatever. But I do see a dual function, and I think this is a really essential thing. And I also thank Brooklyn and Dorothea for their humility in asking to do it. So, I think it's really good.
We'll start out in the best way possible.
Yeah, yeah, clean slate, you know, the help with the transition. I agree with, with what, what Dan said as well. Is there, are there any other thoughts or comments on this proposal? I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Lightgib.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll get that signed into them.
Sorry, Dorothea, would, would we be able to, it sounded like we had agreement on the, the COVID policy changes, but did we need to make a motion related to that?
No, I think we've been kind of just. We can, I mean, if the board's more comfortable, but I think we've been kind of just having the discussion and moving forward with the recommendation from the board. But we can always do a motion. Anytime. I have spare ones in my car, I'm sure.
When in doubt.
Do a motion.
Yeah, I would like to. I would feel comfortable since we're talking about policies for a couple of office areas and the masking, so. I, I will, I will make a motion then that we relax the masking policies both at the DPW and at Village Hall. And remind me what the other part of that was.
Um, we are gonna start in-person meetings for the village board on March twenty-fourth.
Right, as Dorothea stated.
So, relaxing, do we need to get more specific, saying that it's just mask optional? Is that what we want to call it? So that it's clear. Okay.
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you. So I'm.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
I was second, Lanfair.
You have a second?
Second, Lanfair.
Got you, Lily. Okay, roll call, trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightgib.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, Seventy-five Monroe Avenue, the escrow agreement. You all received copies of that? Any? Thoughts? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. From somebody?
What is the motion exactly? To accept it?
I believe that is the motion.
Except the agreement as presented.
And our, our legal team has reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, it makes sense, but I, it's a lot of legalese.
Yes, Dan Spitzer sent an email today, you know, hoping it was on the agenda for the board to review and approve.
Then I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, Stetser.
Okay, roll call, trustee Lightgib.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye. And then, Dorothea, you also, and you all received this a little bit later, because we had just received it, the TY-Lyn contract. If, I don't know if you want to just refer to that or?
Yes, in the same email from our attorney Spitzer, he informed us that the planning board, I guess, and was good with the everything. So, we, they asked that the board approve the TY-Lyn contract to move forward for their services for the Seventy-five Monroe project.
As clarification, the escrow, the money in escrow is to make certain that the applicant will be paying for the TY-Lyn services.
Correct. In mere fact, I'll be opening a separate bank account for the escrow funds to track everything in and out, and it'll be charged to appropriately. So, I'll be making a visit to the bank.
Yeah, and that, it's, it's my understanding, Dorothea, that in the past, escrows have been commingled in the general fund.
And yes, it was commingled. You can do it both ways, yeah. But honestly, given the size of this escrow and everything and issues we've had in the past, I'd rather have it separated from the village fund, so it's accountable when money goes in and money goes out, so it's very clear.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for that explanation. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Did we have a motion on TY-Lyn?
TY-Lyn, no, we didn't have.
Do we have a second? Do we have? Well, Dan, you made the motion.
He did for the escrow.
That was for the escrow. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the TY-Lyn contract.
Okay, second.
Second, Lanfair.
Okay.
Okay.
You, roll call.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightgib.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, moving things forward. Agenda item number four, the establishment of a sewer reserve. And Jeff, thanks for doing all that work and putting it together. Are there any questions about that? Any questions for Jeff?
Where did the three hundred thousand dollar number come from?
Scott Harder, Scott Harder's estimate.
Yeah.
That was part of this.
Yes.
Work. Okay, all right, thanks.
And again, this is in response to, Dorothea, correct me if I'm wrong, a discussion with the, with, with the controller, the audit from the controller.
Yep, this was part of the controller's original audit, and when they did the follow-up audit, it was again, part of that comment as well, that this really needed to be established and done with the sewer account.
Okay, all right.
And, yeah.
No, go ahead, Dan.
To be clear, we already have this money.
Yes.
We're just moving it and, and labeling it.
Correct. We're designating it for a purpose.
Right. Yes, Lily?
As sewer rents are collected, do we have a vehicle to also add to this account? And if there was, we've limited it to the three hundred thousand dollars, or can it be added to over time? Because this is the catastrophic account, so, you know, clearly, the more money we have in that account, the better we are prepared to deal with any event. So, if, is there a percentage that will be set aside from the sewer bed that goes into this reserve account? Oh.
Understood. Thanks for the question, Jeff.
This is a, a capital reserve fund. There has to be a specific basis for the amount that you put into it. So, we've got that basis. To add more to it, we would need an additional basis to do that. So, I don't think you can just put it in there, budget it every year to put into it. You'd have to have a justification every year to put more into it.
Yeah, why, why don't we just back up? Because the way Scott Harder came up with the three hundred thousand, we were thinking, what is the most catastrophic thing that could happen? You know, and we were thinking a siphon under the canal. And so, that three hundred thousand came from our engineer in terms of what it would take, you know, to, to do the repairs on that siphon. So, you know, we felt that that was a solid number to set up for the, for the reserves. And that was, Scott had given us that material. I think you can, you know, some of you may remember a while back, you know, talking about what it would take.
Okay, so that's a static account, that just.
Yes.
It is what it is. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions about the reserve fund? I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the fund. Jeff, how do I make the motion?
No, no, that's, no, no, that's, I, I just wanted to be sure the trustees understand. To do it this way, and to get the money out quickly, if we needed it quickly, this is subject to a permissive referendum. And the process for that is, Dorothea, has to post within ten days, and a petition has to be filed within thirty. The resul, or the, the fund, if, if no petition is filed, becomes effective thirty days later. So, it would require someone to petition against this reserve fund. But I just want to make sure you understood the whole process.
And then on the other side of that, if we needed to access the money in the fund, how would that happen? If you could.
Resolution, resolution.
Through a resolution by our board, so it's a faster way for us if there was a true emergency. Okay, yes, Zach.
Probably kind of a far out question, but the likelihood of, you know, this catastrophic, catastrophic event to happen is pretty slim and could be many years down the road. So, let's say that three hundred thousand dollar estimate is no longer enough. How do you adjust that price to compensate for just the movement in the economy?
Wouldn't we amend the language for the fund?
No, you, you would.
Do that.
You would, you would add to the fund by resolution, which would then be subject, subject to the permissive referendum.
So, it would be the same action again, but just with revised, for example, if Scott Harder said, gee, it's, it's up to three hundred and eighty thousand. That, is, is that my understanding? Additional information or data that would prompt us?
Yes.
To increase the, the money. Okay.
Right. And so, this, just understand that, that it's any sewer failure, not just a, a siphon.
Right.
So, we've just, we just, Scott just picked the one that was, would be the most catastrophic and require the most work. Quickly.
Yeah. So, to that end, it was, it was conservative. In other words, we looked at the worst possible thing that could happen, which I think was good. Any other comments or discussion? A motion? Yes, Jeff?
Proper motion would probably be to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
So moved. To adopt the resolution.
Okay, Justin's got it.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Lightgib.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item up, just a review and an update of our pre-existing village reserves.
Yeah, we, I think we covered this well in our budget meeting. I will say, Lily, once these accounts are straightened out, those would be the accounts that we would budget to continue funding and adding additional from like sewer for the sewer reserves into every year. So, that would be a good time to say, okay, we want to put one percent more into this account or whatever, once we get the language straightened on those accounts. Okay?
Okay. All right. I mean, we did cover it in the budget meeting, so, yeah, thanks, thanks for that. Next up, let's, oh, we did the COVID update. Next up.
Sorry, before, before.
Justin?
I, I wanted to, to address that as well, because I, I think that there were some important things that we, that we discussed in the budget meeting. And the public might be interested in that. Personally, I was a bit disappointed that an action was taken related to those reserve funds in our Monday budget meeting, specifically to assign our municipal council and our clerk treasurer to research those funds which were stated to be inaccessible, or some of those funds were stated to be inaccessible. Despite the fact that I had asked for further information on the reserve funds in an email to the board Saturday prior to the meeting, I said, if there are any other details the board may need to know about these funds, please provide them prior to Monday's meetings, so we're all on the same page for our budget discussion. That wasn't just me looking for information. I was hoping that the entire board, since I knew that this was a, a topic that is, is relevant and interesting to everybody, I was asking for information to be sent around. Apparently, there was information on the galley plan, on the historical usage and funding of those reserves. And nothing was received prior to that meeting, at which an action actually was taken regarding the reserves. So, I hope that we can do better in the future about informing the board members about actions that will be possibly taken at meetings and distributing information that we've collectively gathered on the, the important issues related to our, our finances. The, I, I'd like to continue for just a moment. So, we're, we're talking about a couple of different areas of funds, the, the sewer funds and the, the general funds. And each of those have different reserves. I did have a conversation that I, I wanted to, to let folks know about as well with our, our former treasurer. And she said that in the general fund, there are actually some, some funds that exist in our accounting software, but they do not exist. They have not been created by resolution. So, I think that some of our, we've, we've discussed this in some of our budget meetings. We've got things like an equipment reserve, DPW building improvements, Village Hall Reserve, road work and infrastructure. And those are off of the general reserve, and currently, they don't have any funds. They were never properly created by the board. However, I think those are, are great reserves to have. I think that if, if you talk to a lot of villagers, they would really expect that we have an earmarked savings account for things like our roads. And I myself was a bit surprised that, that we still do not. I think that, I, I hope that in, in the coming years, after this current budget cycle, that we talk about those reserves and we, we create some of those earmarked funds by resolution and start building multi-year capital plans towards saving in those funds. The, this, this dovetails into the discussion about the, the budget, and I think it's not possible to separate the discussion of reserves from the budget. We've, we've gotten a budget this year, a bit later than we have in, in prior years, that, that I've observed the, the board's operation. And the, the process to me is, is less collaborative and, and less open for discussion of these types of issues, such as the, the. such as the the reserves that are available to us than I would like. We've started the process late, and we've started the process with a balanced budget that was created in small groups before bringing the discussion to the board. Personally, I was really hoping that we would be able to start the discussion with things like saving for for roads, saving for sidewalks, saving for the sewer system. And and that didn't happen. So as as I'm looking at the budget, you know, I'm hearing people say that we're getting close to a budget that that can be adopted. You know, personally, I'm having trouble seeing it that way. I do hope that and I bring this up here because
Okay, can you wrap this up? Because we do want to move this along.
I I understand. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak on a topic.
Yeah, yeah. I understand other people want to weigh in, and I think it's important we hear from everybody.
Great. Sure.
So I'll be real quick.
Justin evidently still has a few more sentences. You know, we need to hear the rest of his spin on this. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Trustee Keating. So I am hoping personally that we can get back on track in terms of the the budget process. When trustee Kalusha finished his term, he left us with a number of spreadsheets on things like sewer projects, sidewalks, roads, and DPW vehicles. Of those, the only ones that I had seen previously was the DPW vehicles one. I don't know of anybody who's been updating the sidewalks, the roads spreadsheet, and the sewer projects. And I think that those are really the things that we have to start thinking about to to establish a healthy budget. So I do hope that we can go back to the drawing board a bit. I would like to help out with this, and I would like to hear what people think that we need in terms of these different areas to take care of our shared infrastructure and make sure that we're setting aside reserves. And then going beyond this budget process, I would like to talk about building a multi-year plan for these different areas. And I think that'll that'll help to make the the following year's budget much stronger. I would also like to discontinue a couple of things that we've started talking about. We've we've talked about in this budget season diverting funds from the sewer fund and paying for general expenses in in Village Hall with those sewer funds. I don't think that's a good thing to do without those multi-year plans. That's actually
We haven't voted on anything.
That's a part of the proposed budget, and then I'm expressing concerns about that.
Great. And we haven't voted on it.
We're not talking about the budget right now. We're kind of going down a
We
big path.
We are talking about the budget with the reserves, and that's why I'm bringing these issues up. And I'm hoping that we can constructively work together as a group to talk about this at the next budget meeting.
I would hope so, too. I would like to hear
Can I talk now?
The board. Yeah.
I've got a long list.
Great on this, Justin. Yes, Dan?
That was like a Martin Luther length list of complaints. So you started, and I'll be quick. You started saying that the action taken on the reserves and complaining about that, the action taken was to investigate. You're making it sound like we were moving money into and using money in reserves. That's action taken on reserves. Investigating how the reserves are laid out is what we took action on. There's there's no, there's no change that's happening. We merely instructed our treasurer and deputy treasurer to learn about it. And if the prior treasurer had trained the existing treasurer, we wouldn't need to do this, but we need to do this because there was no training. So you keep citing the former treasurer as if it was this masterpiece of work. And if that work had been done, we wouldn't have needed to do this. You gotten the budget later, totally disagree with that. You said it's been less collaborative, unquote. Totally disagree with that. The the prior budgeting process was one person's opinion was given for weeks and months at a time, and we barely got a word in edgewise. This has been completely collaborative. You are entirely welcome to talk about anything you want during the budgeting meetings. Nobody's stifling you. You're welcome to talk about anything. That's basically it.
Thanks, Dan. Also, and I'll send this out, or Dorothea, maybe you can send it out. You probably have a copy as well. Of the timeline, according to NICOM, for putting together the budget, we are precisely on track. So I'm sorry that maybe you feel differently, but we are certainly complying with best practices for our budget cycle, and we really have not feared from it. However, it was done in the past. Was done, you know, that's fine. We are all here now. We're getting our budget done. We're right on track with Nikon, and we'll be able to pull things together and vote when we need to vote. I guess you have your take on it. I also think that it's important that the public hear the entire story. And that is, these reserves have been, go back as far as correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothea, Jeff, the 70s, I believe, some of these were established with language that wasn't clear enough. So if the money were to be accessed, we may not be accessing it appropriately, and it would trigger a controller's review of how we access that money, what we were using it for. And so this is about a half a million dollars that has been tied up for decades of taxpayer money. And I think the action that our board has taken is the most prudent action that has been taken by any board so far in the history of this village to investigate this, make sure we understand what's in those reserves, and then take the action to either amend or repurpose those reserves so we can access almost a half a million dollars of taxpayer money. I'm proud of this board for taking this action and moving forward because this has been lingering for years. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Lily?
Yeah, thank you. Could I, may I ask clarification that once the 300,000 is removed from this sort of fund and put in a separate account, is that, are you? Is that part of the fight, the half a million that you're discussing? Or is there another 500,000 beyond?
There's a 500,000 beyond what is already in that sewer fund.
And it is not, you're saying that it, all of the 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 reserves that the reserve I for one was assuming existed for sidewalk, DPW, and also for equipment. You're saying there is nothing in those accounts?
No, those reserves don't exist.
But they don't exist. They were set up evidently, or
Mary
have been set up.
Mary proposed those types of reserves to the board. And at the time, the board decided not to fund them because funds were tight. They haven't been set up as was in the sewer account. There was two reserves proposed, and they were funded. But those reserves do not exist. I can't put the money into the reserves because they're just not there. They would have to go through the same process as Jeff did tonight with the sewer reserve. They're just not there. There's one reserve in the general fund, and I believe, and someone, correct me, I think there's five reserves in the sewer fund that need to be straightened out. So that's where the money made for. Okay. Without the paperwork in front of me, I think there were six, you know. The bottom line is, the language and all the existing reserves, except for the one the board is trying to establish tonight, is apparently problematic. That anyway, trying to pull any of the funds out causes a problem. It would cause the controller to come in, we would be forced to pay it back with interest immediately because you have certain ways of taking those funds out and certain actions that have to be done. So we need to fix it. We need to repurpose it, straighten the language out, so it is usable at any time when the board or the public needs it used. That's simply what we're trying to do.
Yes, Justin, last comments, and then we're going to move on. Yep.
Sure, I would just like to add that based on my discussion with the former treasurer, and I believe that she was working on her books for for 20 years or so. She told me something slightly different about those reserve funds. She said that we could still take the money out. They were established a long time ago, maybe going back to the 1930s or 40s for some of those. And the language that we have to establish those funds is perhaps not what we would like. And we may not be able to use it in some cases, but it was not described as entirely inaccessible. So my my proposal was to discuss this as a board before referring it out to other council and making sure that we keep those reserves. Because I think that they're they're very important. My my concern here is that we're using these things as we're moving towards a position where it makes it easier for us to use these things as one-shot revenue. And I don't want to see us doing that. I want to make sure that we're keeping the right reserves, which is, I'd like to track.
I'm not clear about that characterization, Jeff.
Yeah, it's really, hold on, that's that's before we get to Jeff. That's really unfair. To be clear to the people online, we haven't voted to touch any of the money. We voted to better understand the money and better legally represent what the money is for. So it's being characterized in a way that would make it sound like we're setting ourselves up to be able to take a bunch of money. It's just not what we're doing and not what we voted on. The vote is clear. We have not voted to touch any of that money.
It's a matter of public record that vote. Thank you for that. Yes, Jeff?
I just want to, I don't want to go on too long with this, but I do not. The reason that the Gally Plan was there was because there was no clarity with regard to those funds. And if there's no clarity with regard to the funds, you really shouldn't be touching them until you know what you've got and then have purpose them in a way that you know how to put them in and how to get them out. That's that was why the Gally Plan was started, because there was no clarity. And no one was sure how to use those funds in a way that was legal. That's the problem.
Yep. Thanks. I think that was succinct. I think that says it all. Okay, moving on. The HPB application and, oh, Steve, you're still here. Maybe you want to chime in on this, but we're going to be bringing a revised application before the board, probably at the next meeting. The HPB has has had a chance to review sort of the revisions of the application. Steve, Steve's put in a lot of work on this, so have several members of the HPB above and beyond just at their meetings. And it's hopefully a much more practical and streamlined and cogent application going forward. So I just wanted to give you that update. And Steve, thanks for all your work on that. And we're going to be tweaking a little bit, I think, before the next meeting. Steve, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, you've covered most of it. There's just a couple of minor things, but overall, it's a great document and will make the application process a little more clear, which which will benefit the residents.
Yeah, I think it'll be a lot easier for applicants online, definitely. Okay, there's just a quick update on that. We also have a Nice Dot update. The there was a contract award given out by Nice Dot, and I believe they are starting or trying to line up the work. They were supposed to start on the 8th sometime this week. On, I guess they're going to be picking up on State Street. Zach, you may want to chime in. They're going to be probably starting on State Street, probably doing the four corners. Those bump outs where they left off in the fall. And then the bridge. Now, you know, we haven't had any pre-construction meetings on the bridge, so we don't really have any, you know, dates in terms of when they're really going to start.
I think everything's pending on that pre-construction meeting. The contractor was just a word of the job. So I think once that is established, they get the materials in, then they'll probably start to bring all parties in and discuss their plans. But that's still up in the air.
Yeah, but but work will be commencing probably within the next month or so.
Yeah.
In some fashion, yeah. Renee, was there anything you wanted to add to that update? It was just, you know, if things are moving forward, you know, spring's coming. Work will be starting. And I think a lot of you also, just on another note, have seen the ongoing replacement of the utility poles up and down at this point on South North Main, I guess.
I have a related item to that, but it's in member items. Are we to member items yet?
Almost. Do you want, do you want, I said, we just, well, the only other thing, why don't we just go right into the discussion of the fee schedule for code enforcement? So, you know, Jeff, Jeff has had a long day, too, and he can cover that. And then we can go into our member items. How's that? Okay, thanks. Yeah. Why don't we skip to then or go go to item nine, discussion of a fee schedule for code enforcement? Jeff had some thoughts on that that I think the board should hear.
So right now, the HPB has a penalty section. And the zoning code has a penalty section. Both of them are a fine of up to $2,000 per per incident and a possible imprisonment of 15 days. Taking the fine first. That seems a little out of line. That's one problem. $2,000 is pretty high for considering that in the zoning code, every 10 days of violation is another offense. And the HPB code, every day, every day of violation is another offense. So and the and the other problem with it is it doesn't have a floor. So a justice could, a justice court judge could say, well, I think this $10 is warranted. So I would suggest that we do gradual a fee, a gradual fine schedule. Something along the lines of 102, 100 to 250 for the first, 250 to 5 for the second, 5 to 750 for the third, and 750 to 1,000 for each one thereafter. So that's, that really gives the judge the lowest he can go. Which then will really be a disincentive to people to not rectify their problems. As you know, we all we all we want is is compliance. We don't really, we're not after the fines. But if people know they've got real money on the line, and it's a gradual incremental increase, I think that would help. Secondly, very often Steve can do these prosecutions very easily. Some cases he can't. But it's the, it's Judge Anne Salvi's opinion, at least, that if we have imprisonment as a part of the possible penalty, then a then an attorney really should be prosecuting these. So I want to tie this down for sure to be be sure. But I I think if we take out the imprisonment, then Steve can keep prosecuting the ones that he can prosecute.
Yeah, I don't know that imprisonment's kind of a way to go.
Not while I, that's the other point. No one is ever going to be imprisoned for for a zoning or HPB violation.
I wanted to imprison. Sort of like that.
What was that, Dan?
Nothing.
Yeah.
I think I'm in agreement, but so I I really think we ought to, you can wait to redo the fine structure and the zoning code, because you're doing a comprehensive look at that. But I I'd kind of like to get the HPB code redrafted sooner rather than later.
Okay. Now, would it be, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 Lily, yep.
Would it necessitate redrafting of the HPB code, or could it be done by resolution that we're changing? How it's how the fees, how it's set up?
Should be, it'll be by local law. It'll be a local law, just amending that section of the HPB code.
Okay, so we have to move this to public hearing.
Right, well, we have to have to have it in front of you before we can move it to public hearing.
So the motion would be to direct you to draft
Just redraft that section of code.
That that piece of the code.
And then that has to be filed, so that's another 1,500 or 1,600 or whatever the fee is up to at this time.
For what?
We have to file with, we would have to file with Munder County. Would we also have to do seeker on it or any or any other?
Right, but it would be. I mean, Dorothy, I don't know about the expense. I don't.
It really depends on the size of the local law. Sometimes if it's a big law, it's more costly. Typically, when we update the code, we do multiple. So that's why it looks larger. It might be four or five laws, but it is is pricely, price, price, pricey to do a ton of local laws a year, and that's what I've been encouraging the board to, you know, be thoughtful with our local law so we don't run a lot. We haven't been doing a lot. Not from like when I first came, I think we were doing like 20, 24 local laws a year. I think we're down to like five or six, so I don't foresee this being super costly to do. I can't imagine it's a large amount of in the local law for this to be done.
It's going to be very small. The local law will be very short. I think it's just a more realistic fine structure.
Okay. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to direct Jeff to I'd entertain a motion to direct Jeff to uh, draft the local law to update our fines and penalties.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Trustee Kitty.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Thanks for bringing that to the attention of the board. Appreciate it. Okay, so now we're at member items. Dan, you, you
Yeah, the, the first one, I got a, I got a call from somebody who lives on Jefferson Road where they put in the new bulbs, our genie has put in the new bulbs, the LEDs. And he, and he said it is just oppressive, that it is just beaming into his bedroom. And in a way that he can't block out.
Oh my gosh.
It's so strong. And he said he's called our genie and they've said, well, tough, that's the, that's the bulb that we're using. And so he wanted to ask whether, you know, we have a relationship with our genie and, you know, can put some kind of diffuser on it and so that it's, it's good on the street, but not so
Oh dear.
blaring. Um, and you, you go, this is between, Jefferson, between Sutherland and um, and Maine.
Okay.
And just take a drive up there at night, you'll see some awfully bright lights shining into people's homes.
Oh my goodness. Okay, yes, Zach, you had your hand up. Did you have a comment on that?
They said it's perpetual twilight in there. It's just, there's nothing they can do.
Wow.
I, I can reach out to our genie and see if they have shields available for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did talk to the guys in the truck and the guys in the truck said things like, yeah, people, people often put those up themselves because it bothers them so much, but this one is so high up. You, this is not
Can't expect someone's gonna go up thirty feet or to put a shield on a streetlight.
No, but see, see if you can do that. I don't know if that's gonna be the case throughout the village, but if you, if you look at that Jeff road part, it's really.
Boy, you can't win. First, they, first the lights were all out. Now they're fixing them and now they're two. Well, that's something we really do need to look at.
They likened it to the sort of strength of light from, like in a country road at an intersection where it's really meant to be incredibly bright.
Yeah.
And it is.
Oh.
I mean, I wonder if that also violates uh,
A dark sky.
Dark sky policy.
Yeah, I'm wondering that too. Yeah, okay. Well, Zach, thanks for following up and, you know, we can work together on that.
Okay.
Anything else, Dan?
Yeah, just uh, real quick, still looking for updates from um, other uh, liaisons to other boards. Uh, there was nothing that of, of consequence that happened at the last um, Chamber of Commerce meeting. It was a lot of minutes and procedural stuff. There was nothing that involved us. And um, as always, I'm in favor of direct uh, sleeves rolled up work on seventy-five Monroe to hopefully solve that in a meaningful way.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have member items? Yes, Lily?
I do. Uh, as requested by the board, I did approach the uh, Chair of the HPB uh, requesting uh, input regarding the concept of an exit uh, interview or whatever way uh, you wanted that, a, a survey.
Customer survey.
Service.
Yeah.
Survey. And um, her, her response was that if there at once, the, the Board of Trustees or the committee uh, that is formed uh, regarding this um, action were to come up with the questions that they would be happy to review those questions. Um, just, to see if they, they were in agreement with them. One, I'm looking for, uh, I wrote down what she had written back uh, regarding another option, and that was to put uh, uh, on our website, an opportunity for anyone to comment about anything regarding the village. And she thought that that might be um, another option rather than have this survey. Um, that it could be online.
And both would be good.
So that was, so once the questions are form, formatted, um, she said her board would like to take a look at them. That, that was her answer.
Great, thank you.
Uh, on, on the same topic, uh, thank you, Trustee Lampier for, for your update on that. And thank you for reminding me about that, uh, that survey. I did also reach out to the Chair of the PZBA, uh, and I did that more recently, so I'll, I'll let this board know when, uh, when I get a response.
Great, thanks for that.
And again, we're, uh, Dan and I are gonna be working on that. And I think we're aiming for, you know, super short, like, you know, three or three to five questions that are really quick and easy to, to answer. Thank you for letting us know what the other board thought.
Great, thanks. All right, anything else, Lily? Nope, that's it. Okay, anything else? Renee, did you have anything?
Um, they, you mentioned the Nice Dot, um, we're just gonna keep a, all the projects that are coming through as soon as we know. When, when the disruptions will occur and where, we'll put it on our website and blast it out and, and keep everyone informed.
You know, I was just, were they gonna hold another public meeting in this?
They, they don't, they didn't last time for the, for the bridge. Um, but we are, we're meeting with them next week, is that?
I don't know if that's confirmed. I don't know if that's confirmed.
Yes, and we could.
We can bring it up then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We'll wrap it all into one.
Yeah, they didn't do it last time. Nothing has changed since their last.
Yeah.
Um, the two uh, sessions that they had, the community sessions.
Okay.
And I think one of them, nobody came.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, I, anyway, um, so we can ask when we meet.
Okay, okay. We can, you know, as you say, we can update, you know, the residents as, as it goes forward. Okay, anything else, Renee? Oh, yep, Lily?
I'm sorry, I, I thought of this question earlier and then when we went on to another subject, I'm gonna circle back uh, on the reserve funds and the discussion uh, around them. Are, are we anticipating that this is something that would be, we would want to um, address prior to the approval of the budget? Is it gonna be a part of our deliberation uh, regarding the budget or is this an entirely different conversation that will happen over a longer period of how the reserve funds will be handled uh, going forward? And I would also like to say when it was brought up by um, Trustee Leeket earlier, um, regarding the spreadsheets that were done by Trustee Kalusha in the past. And, you know, what a, what an uh, absolute labor of uh, love that was for the village that he, that he uh, created these documents. And um, you know, I just, I really miss him a lot.
Yeah, I hear you. I know.
Um, agreed, Lily. And um, anybody is welcome to update those. And um, to answer your question, I think the answer is both on the reserve funds. So there will be some discussion during the budgeting process and there will be ongoing discussion as well.
So that, so that to, to further um, question about what that uh, concept, as we move forward, I, part of determining our budget and our path forward, um, wouldn't that play into it, what, what was happening uh, with those reserve funds? Would that be part of our long-term planning?
Well, we, we, because the reserves certainly are part of, have been um, going back decades. Technically, part of the long-term planning for the village, but you know, that the what's hinging on this now is the fact that, you know, as has been explained, I think in a couple of different meetings now, that, you know, it's the investigation about how we go forward and repurpose or rename and be able to access those funds. Um, so we can use them appropriately for what they were designated for and access that money as needed. Which is separate from our budget in terms of what that action is. Um, we also, I just want to remind the board that we did take the action the other night to not continue to fund. What was, there was one, Dorothy, you might recall, there was a fund where five thousand dollars was gonna be put into a fund that didn't even, had not even been established. So I think in terms of reserves, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern with the exception of the action that we took tonight. Which was to establish the catastrophic reserve fund for the uh, sewer repair. Um, and we need to get that information as had, has been explained earlier in this meeting and also in prior meetings. Um, to move forward with, with a plan that is solid about how we utilize properly these reserves and be able to access them properly. I don't know, Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add to that? The budget, the budget goes on. In other words, this reserve issue has been hanging out, as you know, you've been on the board for a long time. You know, it's been an issue. What, what is going on with these funds? So the budget has moved forward uh, for decades. Regardless of whether or not these reserves were even accessed. So I think now we're at least sorting them out and we'll be able to move forward. And that is something separate from the budget. Yeah, yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't know whether this would be part of the budget process, but at some point, the board is gonna have to decide what board wants in reserves.
Right.
And for what purpose. So whether that's part of the budget process, you know, you certainly could ex, start exploring those issues.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's what we've initiated.
But, but to know what we can move and where, I think we're gonna have to finish our investigation first.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, um, I have a member item. Um, on uh, this past Saturday, there was a Canal Symposium. Uh, was a day-long conference um, at uh, Saint John Fisher. And there were a number of people from uh, the Canal Corporation who spoke. Uh, Brian Stratton, who was the, who was the Executive Director of Canal Corporation, was the keynote speaker. Um, it really was a great, great symposium. I really learned a lot and I learned a whole other level of detail about engineering the canal and um, how they do canal repairs and locks. Um, but I did have an opportunity to speak with the what, uh, Western Regional Engineer who is putting together the plan for the repair uh, down on the canal path. And um, they're gearing up for that. I had another very brief conversation, conversation with him again today. Uh, he's gonna get back to me as quickly as possible about the dates of when they're gonna be doing the repair. Um, but we are, we're, you know, in, in the hopper. Um, it should happen probably within the next uh, six to eight weeks, six weeks, I think, out. Um, but as that, that starts to shape up, they'll be back in touch with us and we'll have the dates and we'll let you know the rollout. Uh, right now, they're also having um, a supply chain problem. Um, because there's a number of repairs up and down the entire canal system. And uh, we are trying to get as many sheet pilings as possible to help us shore up that embankment all the way down to the State Street Bridge. So that is the goal and that's what they're, they're looking to do. Um, again, it's a, there may be some limitations with supply chain. So that's the latest update, but it is gonna happen sooner than later. Okay, that's my member item.
That's great. I'm so glad that we're getting that. That has been such a problem.
I know. And yeah, it really has for, for a number of years and as uh, uh, we had a meeting with the DPW crew and they were saying it's, it's continuing to erode. I mean, even more erosion over the, the, the winter. So, and, and also I should give a shout out to Zach and the crew. They have been absolutely champs at securing that fence despite windstorms and snow and sleet and rain and everything else uh, to keep that fence in place for, for safety reasons. So thank, thanks Zach to you and the crew.
No problem.
Yeah. You know, we appreciate it, really. Okay, any other member items? Any other comments from the public?
If nothing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Twenty-three skidoo, uh, so moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Uh, Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Kitty.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Have a great evening and we'll see you on Monday.
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice evening. Good work, thank you.